Hello, Michael Austin. Welcome back here to the City Council in Palmer where we are reading some of the emails for the mask mandate. We are reading them. Don't forget to like and share this video right here. Go to my website, www.woodwardic.com and hit that donate button. And donate a few bucks, help me be able to make more days. We're about ready to begin reading again. And this segment of the show also will be giving the votes. So make sure you like and share so that everybody in the last section can find out where it's at. All of our shows are going to have the mask mandate. Thanks again.
We'll do the event. We'll be on the top.
Where?
It'll say waiting room.
Oh, waiting room.
Your house. Your house is right here.
Yep.
And you're going to go to like put screens and then it'll pop up there.
Oh, okay.
And then it'll get to the top and you'll hit the name. And you'll see the address.
Okay.
There you go.
Sorry.
Can't be smarter than the mouth.
Did you hear it? Robert Shanks, who's who I'm about.
Yeah, Robert Shanks. I read that one in the magazine.
The name was Robert Maria. What's her name again? There's Max and Maria and some others.
I read Maria, did I?
Yeah, and then you.
I read Maria and.
Comusion.
It's not, it's not a magazine.
So there's two.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
And then you read some confusion. Right. Because there's.
Okay.
All right. Robert Shanks. I was raised in Palmer, graduated from Palmer High, and now work here in the city while the kids attend a person's school. I choose to live, shop, and work in the city because I love the city and the people that make what it is. All the businesses in Palmer, big and small, that I have been to and worked at, require a mask. And usually I sit next to all the city people. I need to wear one upon entering with a sign at the door. I don't wear one as most people do. I personally hate wearing the mask, but I do have respect for the businesses that are asking me to and the customers they serve. When I first heard the first mask mandate, many feel disappointed in the two newly elected council members. Palmer residents and business owners are responsible adults. Mandating something that we already practice is basically having the city council, excuse me, tell Palmer residents that we're doing it wrong and the council looks better. So do our way. Yesterday, 11:16, 20, Anchorage had 433 cases, and Palmer had five. Palmer is not Anchorage, and we shouldn't be treating this step to the mask mandate, not all the depth of Anchorage. I believe the cases and hospitalization become too high to governable institutes statewide mandates that other states have just started to implement. We know how to take care of ourselves and each other without mandating. Even when a mandate, people who now wear masks are still going to wear masks and people who don't are still not going to wear them. Most businesses, even the one I work at, don't have the staff or time to check each person that comes in the door. And even though the order says not to shank, not to shank people, that will inevitably happen. In a year of sickness, depression, and stress, we give you some more positive messaging from our council. Like keep, keep it up Palmer for having low numbers of positive cases by wearing masks, while she becomes a key in six feet of distance. Instead, if Palmer City Council passes mask mandate because Palmer residents can't be trusted enough to slow the spread on their own. We can, we are, as you guys are at work and when I shop in town. Please not pass this ordinance. We Palmer residents can get through this together as responsible adults and citizens. Tanya Shanks. Hello, my name is Tanya Shanks, and I would like my voice heard about this ordinance. I work in Anchorage, at a hospital, and I've lived in Palmer for over 40 years now. I want to share my two cents about the mask of Palmer. I believe that the business owners of Palmer have the right to make their own decisions when it comes to masks. I have supported businesses that require and do not require masks. I believe shopping is small and believe that Palmer provides small businesses. If anyone does not feel safe going into a business that does not have a mask requirement, they have several choices. They can go in and wear their mask, they can shop at another store, or they can ask the owner if they can have a mask while they're shopping. Since I visit shop, downtown Palmer, I've had the chance to ask owners what their thoughts were about the mask. Many of them cannot afford to lose any more customers they already, they are already on the verge of shutting their doors forever. This is something that Palmer cannot afford to lose. One of the many charms of Palmer is the many choices of stores. I know the owner of Mississippi Consignments makes several arrangements to accommodate a variety of shoppers. The owner of a essential was allowing people to face them with her so she could walk her phone around the store and they could virtually shop. The owner of a fireside, fireside books set up a curbside pickup area outside their store for customers that did not want to or could not come inside. And the owner of kombucha 203 had only masks available for, for use. While they have made a conscious decision to adapt to the current situation, this is not a long-term solution. This is also not something that the government can fix. The box stores are ordered due to what is best for them by requiring masks. Small business owners should be able to make up their own minds as to what permits they're asking us customers to comply with. By passing this ordinance, we will be wasting tax, tax pay dollars for everyone's time in the spirit of Palmer. If this idea were brought forth to the deputy mayor by a business owner, they should be proud that we live in a great country where they're allowed to own their businesses without government rule. They should be thankful that no one's controlling how businesses are being run. They should also be thankful that if they want to require masks, then there are businesses that they have the freedom to do so. Thank you very much, and that Palmer makes the best decision for Palmer because after all, that's why I love Palmer so much. On the shakes.
We need that, Richard.
And the time is going to be 8:42. Okay, we're council residents joining us now.
In your name.
Yes. Erin Shelley. Hello, my name is Erin Shelley. Please consider seeing this public testimony on behalf of myself. I request my office to write you to the public record at a special council meeting on Wednesday, August 2nd, November 10th, 2020. I've worked and lived most of my everyday life in Palmer. For the record, I'm against a proposed mask mandate for this by the city council of Palmer. Not only is it a gross overreach of authority, but it will be also unintended consequences such as a false sense of security. Masks are highly ineffective at preventing the spread of COVID-19 and an adverse impact on local businesses. Taking away all of our citizens' constitutional rights is not warranted given the current situation. The vast majority of people that acquire COVID-19 recover approximately 98%. People need to be responsible for their own actions. If you are high risk, you need to take precautions measures to protect yourself. Rather than applying a policy that adversely impacts everyone's lives, thanks to President Donald Trump, we now have multiple vaccines, and this will be behind soon. You do not need mandates by liberal Democrat politicians who don't blame the science and simply have a deep, secret desire to control other people's lives. We can make decisions for ourselves. I am much more qualified to be making these decisions for myself in the Palmer City Council. Thank you, Erin Shelley. Kristen Shields. My name is Kristen Shields. I am the owner of Paradise Standing. I believe that a mask mandate will hurt the small businesses in our community. Not everyone will want to abide by this mandate. Many businesses are already struggling and trying to recover from hard mandates. And with a pandemic and mandates that have crippled or closed some businesses, you disagreeing votes must be dealt with in this matter. By enacting new law, you are asking people to abide by something that you yourself have a hard time doing. Please do not fall asleep to what is on our other states. The elected officials do as they please and expect the community that they control to abide by their rules. Do not think you have a credit with an agenda that you feel needs to be passed. You are a social lady and need to be better about setting example if you're going to be casting strict mandates in front of businesses and vendors. If you do not comply, there will be punishment. Controlling the community is not the answer. Allow people to make a choice for themselves. In this unpredictable times, without knowing certain form of long-term effects or mask mandates even were, you are asking people to trust you blindly. If the environments that we walked around in were sterile, then maybe mandates such as this would work. Most people do not wear the mask correctly in the first place, making them more susceptible to virus. And then with fears that stick out, bull and mask make it very ineffective. You cannot mandate men to shave, so that makes, so that makes mask will sufficiently work. Mask wearers that have them fall below their noses make it pointless. That new mask constantly makes it pointless. Trust the community you live in to be diligent. You are asking businesses to punch your turnover customers that do not agree with the mandate, which cannot come into my salon and use hands they bought paid for unless they have a mask on. Customers that do not agree with the mandate will take their business elsewhere. You do not have a luxury of curbside handing. I am not dedicating to my customers what they can and cannot do. That is their choice. As an elected official, it is your job to listen to both sides of this dispute, whatever majority the people want and how to best represent them. Trusting that the community will be gentle and tender in this time, in my opinion, is the best way to gain respect in a position. I urge you to agree in common so that will enable this community to trust me and feel secure on the decisions you make on behalf of them by not forcing anyone in this mandate. Just have to look for shields. Justin Short. I drive school bus from the MSBSD. I see everyone wearing masks everywhere they go. Today I walked into a school that I love to drive toward, and half of the staff has due double take because they didn't recognize that it was me. It makes it difficult to identify students, teachers, and who's supposed to be there and in some cases who is not. But I feel strongly that this mask adds another stressful and necessary task for people of any businesses to pay attention to. If I'm afraid someone in a bad way, what the weapon intending to cause me or my students harm with no way to defend myself, such students, do I wear a couple vests everywhere I go? I've been watching for months to this day. I have not seen a single person that washes or sanitizes their hands every time they touch the mask. This literally renders the mask absolutely useless in the case of touching an infected surface part of touching your mask. I am not discounting that COVID can be dangerous for specific people, but the protection, the mask is supposed to provide should be optional. If you choose to wear and feel the protection necessary, do it properly. Don't force it on the rest of us that find it unnecessary. Thomas Sichler. Grassroots local standing up to the ever-expending bullshit. Anchorage with 280,000 people has had just under 13,000 cases of Corona with 60 deaths. That is a 0.47% chance of death, not excluding any reasons in combination with virus for death. Matsu has 180,000 people and five deaths with 237 to confirmed cases. That's a 0.20% chance of death. Anchorage has had a mask mandate in place while Matsu is not. Anchorage has done a very vast community to shore small businesses, schools, churches, and the financial well-being of its citizens, while Matsu has allowed its citizens to make choices based on what's right for them and their family. You are almost six times more likely to test positive in Anchorage, and if you do test positive, you are more than 10 times more likely to die from the virus. This doesn't include the deaths by suicide from losing everything, children not being in school, or people not having a social network to eat or to discuss the things going on in the virus. This doesn't include the additional domestic child abuse taking place in quarantine. This doesn't include the drug and alcohol abuse that's taking place in quarantine. One city is doing what is right to protect their entire population during outbreak, and the others doing therapy and to make it worse. To Thomas Sichler. Dustin Silva. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmember. My name is Dustin Silva. I was born and raised in Palmer. I left for a bit for college and matured five years ago with my wife. We came back to Palmer because we both wanted to raise our families here. Palmer is truly a special place. I am writing to you all to inform you that I'm in opposition of the proposed emergency ordinance regarding a mask mandate in Palmer. I have three questions for you to answer before you vote on this. One, how are you planning to enforce a mask mandate? The Lord said you would use all available enforcement options. It would be absolutely, it would absolutely be inappropriate to utilize the great men, women, and artists of our nation to enforce this mandate. They have much, much more important business to attend to. Two, do you want the Palmer to turn into Anchorage? What makes Palmer so special is that nothing, that it is nothing like Anchorage. This mandate spearheaded by Councilwoman Holmes is the first step to Palmer becoming like Anchorage. The mask mandate does not seem to be working there, not to mention Anchorage Assembly has lost its citizens' trust. Do you think this is going to help your annexation project? Ordnances like this in the future will impact all of those new territories. The citizens that reside in the study areas for annexation are paying attention to what you're doing right now with this ordinance. Nobody wants unnecessary government overreach. This will hurt the annexation project. Palmer businesses have been great of taking the right steps to protecting themselves and their customers. They are doing this on their own, all, all the while struggling to keep businesses' operations moving in the right direction. This mandatory mask-wearing ordinance by Councilwoman Holmes is sending a clear message to businesses and citizens in Palmer that the city of Palmer government does not trust them to make responsible decisions. Don't forget, this government exists because of our great services. I admire Councilwoman Holmes' review, what she believes in is best for Palmer. All we can hope for as citizens is that our city council members are doing what they think is best for Palmer. However, this ordinance misses the mark. It has only created a division in our town. This ordinance is not what's best interest of Palmer. City Council is not the correct platform to advocate for political parties' policy on the matter. Governor Emily encouraged everyone to wear masks. Notice how he did issue mandate. He wants folks to make the, make the best decisions on their own without government enforcement. The council must follow the governor's lead. The council must vote against this ordinance. The council must believe in and support citizens and the citizens to make the best decisions for themselves and others without government overreach. If for some reason this ordinance passes, I ask citizens and businesses in Palmer to ignore the ordinance and continue to do the best you can for yourself and for your neighbor on their terms. Respectfully, Dustin Silva. Nina Dinay Silva. Dear City Council, I would like this ordinance to the record that my family and I are strongly against this mask mandate. My ability is in helping for the helping individuals to be bringing their mask will do. If we can save the system, at this conclusion, a straight hand to face contact. And wearing a mask multiplies the likelihood of more hands to face contact. I feel that those that are too afraid to go into the public can utilize all the curbside accommodations and allow the rest of the public to shop and dine freely inside without a mask. Recently walked out of a restaurant that was requiring masks to dine in. How does anyone eat and wear masks? So businesses are losing customers over this. These masks are so unfriendly and it builds the virus even more. The virus door. I walked by several people just because I didn't recognize them. This is very sad to me, all because of a virus that has a 99% survival rate. Why are we allowed this to violate this and hurt small businesses in the process? Freedom doesn't require masks. Freedom is a choice that should be left to the individual to decide. Nina Silva. Amy Smith. This proposed ordinance with all of its rules for its regulations, exemptions, and legalities is government overreach mandating how we are to live, no freedom to choose for ourselves. Government can only have power over us if we grant them that power. It's suicide for the ordinance is the pandemic, which the so-called scientists and experts have been wrong about from the start. At first they said they'd flatten the curve, civil lockdown scheme, and finally the curve changed to eradicating the virus. Eradicating virus to part of either the development or vaccine or achieving, or achieving, or immunity. Thanks to President Trump's Operation Warp Speed, we now have two vaccines with over 90% efficiencies, but they have yet unapproved for widespread distribution. Isn't it amazing, coincidence that Big Pharma has had these vaccines, vaccines trials per month, but they just got came out with them after the election? Her immunity isn't talked about too much, mainly because the mainstream media ignores it. There are many scientists, experts that believe that masks do little to stop the spread, that 99.7% of people under the age of 70 who contract the virus are asymptomatic or have little or mild symptoms. These experts believe, as I do, that the vulnerable need to be protected, that the rest of us need to live our lives in a normal manner for our own mental well-being. The cure cannot be worked from the disease. Lockdowns do have a miserable harm in terms of suicide, domestic violence, child abuse, drug and alcohol, alcohol addiction, and depression. This mask mandate appears as likely just a first step to more lockdowns. This is the role of left to shutter businesses with the file nails and the proffits due with capitalism and socialism. I, for one, am outraged at this mask mandate proposal of a global. It would be very destructive for the community, enough against one other, protecting the vulnerable, the few, yes, but don't take away the freedoms of all, putting mandates and restrictions on everyone for the sake of the few. Amy Smith. Susan Smith. Hello, this is so invasive and unconstitutional. I have no choice but to respond to this proposal. Me and my household are absolutely disagreeing with this. There is so much truth out there to why this mask-wearing thing is not just scientifically verifiable. It is interesting to see that the boxes that these masks come into, they are not factual against coronavirus. This is amazing to me. They have, that they have all of us thinking that this is going to save us from getting sick. There was an interesting study done in which Dr. Fauci was a part of. And this study showed that the Spanish flu virus, along with the wearing of masks out of fear of this virus, gave bacterial pneumonia strong hold in hormones and caused majority to death. Again, common sense, we weren't meant to be like this. These masks are quite literally a petri dish for growing the bacteria hanging off of your face. I can't wear a mask at, it literally makes it impossible for me to get an oxygen. It's a horrible thing for me personally, as I feel like I'm suffocating. Just typed in bacteria were the real killers in the 1918 flu pandemic in New York. It is also interesting to have seen a lot of doctors who have been heavily censored by the, by the way, come out on steps of the Supreme Court recently to me. A presser of American people saying the same thing about what really works against this virus and that masks don't work. We literally have to dress up in here that make you look like you're working and a lot of logical weapons that are out to be catching us. And these doctors said, obvious things that are best offense against all of this is to have a healthy immune and immune system in the first place. And that's done, as everyone knows, by healthy eating habits, et cetera. They asked if you're not with therapeutics, if we're treating to actually work, and it wasn't the vaccine because they were going against Big Money and Big Pharma, they were censored. These are just crap ops coming out and saying this. It's amazing how they were all heavily censored, gave stock and asked why, who stands to gain from all of this? This isn't a conspiracy, this is true. All you hear is COVID, COVID, COVID. What happened to all the cases of pneumonia we experienced every year and all the food we experienced every year, which has just been, just a devastating to our elderly and all the other individuals who have compromised immune systems or problems that make them vulnerable during the cold and flu season? That have never, that was never important enough for mask mandate until this time in our recent history, which makes you wonder, doesn't it? Sincerely, Susan Smith. Matt Soloy. Would you know the concerns? I do not agree with the mask mandate in the state of Palmer. I am not against wearing masks, but it is the individual's decision to do so. If an individual business opts to require masks to endure this, should be their choice as well. I believe suggestions and guidance from the city will be accepted much better than forceful action. And therefore, the community should make their own decision on how to protect themselves without losing their liberties. I expect the city of Palmer to consider a decision that is not based on fear, but instead based on our, on our everything values and trust in the community. As so many cities do, you're using these streets of public record. Thank you, Matt Soloy. Nadia Soloy. I'm against the mask mandate for the city of Palmer, and it's my belief that Palmer has never been a city that wants to allow our government to control every action of our lives. It is not that I don't believe that COVID is serious, it is more that I believe people in Palmer are quite capable of setting boundaries and expectations for themselves. Businesses owners can create mask requirements on their own premises or go with mask requirements without the need for the government to think for them. We do not need to be detained with the mask mandate, indeed, certainly, as well. Chris Spicer. To the council and interested parties, residents would like for everyone around them to be masked and social distancing seems to be a place for left and right of the businesses that require it to go to A and C or stay home. If this administration implements mandates, then it's telling its citizens, we know better than you do, and that is a dangerous road we go down. Please don't think the local businesses and the sacred people's rights do not implement mandates. Recommendations are appropriate, mandates are not. I assure you, with mandates in place, businesses will suffer. I think that I speak for many when I say I won't be taking my business elsewhere, just to make it a many conservative citizen. Chris Spicer. Janet and Andrew Stanton. We are sending this email to let you know we are against emergency ordinance number 20016. The reason is that for the, for the people who live, work, and do business in Palmer is as follows. One, we are very independent and don't need local state or government to tell us how to best and take care of our families. Two, we feel that people should be able to choose whether to wear a mask or not depending on their family needs. This should not be determined by government that doesn't know what is best for individual families. Three, as far as enforcement, if this does pass, don't count on everyone following this mandate, so police miss may be a problem. Sincerely, Janet and Andrew Stanton. Matt Seal. Good afternoon. I am for you to not create a mask mandate for Palmer. I do not live in Palmer, I live in the ceiling, and regularly commute through Palmer and do not want to act towards the town. For businesses and individuals that want to enforce it to so, please do not use government power to create another unneeded restriction. As a business owner, I believe that this will be served people from spending money at Palmer businesses, and I myself will not be spending money in Palmer businesses if this mandate passes. Just like I have not wanted to be in another mandate. Thank you, Matt Seal. And that leaves vacation. Melissa Steen. I would like to speak in opposition of some words, woman, some are business owner and business consultant and have clients throughout the entire state. I extremely, I've been extremely involved in this since day one. The system that have been put front and center during this pandemic, we are all struggling to keep our doors open. We are struggling to make pay more and keep our employees happy, to put food on our tables and still try to have enough to keep our doors open and put food on our home table. There are people out there that see businesses angry and enemy, but when you remove all the businesses from the, from the economy, you will devastate it. This is what is happening. Look around all the businesses that have enforced the closure doors permanently. As business owner, I will never mandate to my employees how they handle their healthcare. I will never mandate my clients how they handle their healthcare. This is not my job nor my business. If the ordinance has passed, you are in fact trying to put a business owner in this position. You are actually potentially putting that business in a position of litigation and potential violence. I know that seems like a bold excessive treatment, but it is not. Your time as a business owner, I'm responsible for removing a person from relegation for not following mandate. Not a law, a mandate that one person leaves more important than our constitution. How is it that you feel a 60-plus-year-old business owner needs to prefer a 27-year-old and force them to leave a facility? Changes are high, and this only, I feel, if I were a Republican, could in fact create physical altercation. You are taking certain doctors and certain people and saying that their beliefs and feelings are more important than others within our community. Where does this end? How long have we gone to trample on our liberties and the foundation of this country before we started? There's nothing left. People have fear of overriding laws and rights. These types of tyrannical orders are being overturned and helping you have cities, boroughs, and states feel liberation. Is this what we want for our town? I've been part of this community for over 20 years. We've always stood together for what was right. I have seen great things from my neighbors, great acts of kindness, and I thank you to come together and show that we're better than this. We are adults, and we have the right to choose what we feel is the correct treatment for our health. No one else is to be responsible for my health, not the government, not my neighbor, no one. That is my job, and I will fight to keep it my job. I will not be told how to handle my healthcare. It is not your job. We've been told over and over to comply and flatten the curve for a couple weeks, a couple more, it's just a rash. Just comply, and we can go back to normal. We are eight months in, and there's no end in sight. I will not continue to live my life in fear. When my time is up, and I will enjoy my life with family and my friends until the end. This virus will continue to run its course. We cannot stop it in its tracks. If you lock us back down and let us out, it will start all over again. We are for the one and the inevitable, not for one and done, and done with this. I choose to live in the valley because we have had the past great achievements and choices out there. Letta and Joe Stillich. We are against the proposed 60-day mandate for a mask. One, we don't need a government to tell us what to do. Government mandates are only the first step along the way to socialism. Two, most people in this area.
Two, most people in the city are fully aware of precautions to avoid contracting COVID and are acting accordingly. Three, businesses should not be mass police to enforce this mandate. Four, police officers have more pressing business to take care of than enforcing the use of masks. Five, to recommend the use of masks and keep social distancing is a much better policy than pronouncing a mandate. We are not a socialist country yet, and we don't want government to make our choices for us. Government has enough to do without giving us the national decisions on ourselves. But let them, Joe Stilich.
Wanda Stern-Hagen. Please don't subject everyone to two masks by this mandate. Let those who want to wear one do so. If masks really work, that will mean enough. The viruses can pass through a cloth if people want to wear it themselves, making everyone have to wear masks for science.
Mary Stone. I'm a resident at Palmer and King, and I am against the mask mandate in Palmer. There is no proven that masks are working considering everyone's wearing different types. The only mask that works is the N95 that no one has. If someone wants to wear a mask to make themselves feel more protected, there's nothing wrong with that. A mandate for everyone to wear a mask that has no proven benefit is control, not prevention. Please make my remarks now and the council may now remember you. Thank you for your time, Mary Stone.
Jennifer Sullivan. Do you admit, ma'am, is concerned? I do not support a mask mandate for the city of Palmer. We do not have the numbers to support the need for such a mandate, nor does the example we see from Anchorage numbers continue to rise with the strict mandates. Our community is known for that loving downhill deal and has been handling this in a glow. Our own numbers are reflected in that. Please allow us to continue to be the community we have always been and worked through this together without government intervening. This is what is best for the people of Palmer. We need to see friendly, familiar faces to have the freedom to choose. Confusion of us all.
Kathy Summers. The proposed ordinance is an overreach by the government. The reported cases within Palmer do not justify this action. Additional hardship will be placed on local businesses that are desperate for customers. Enforcement threats sound like new words of policing. Mrs. Palmer, not eager. Overall, we are mindful of each other and want to be safe during this health crisis. Kathy Summers.
Thomas Summers. Making a mask mandatory is taking away my constitutional rights, freedom of choice. Masks should be an individual choice. If you don't want to wear one, don't. As a resident of Palmer for over 30 years, I firmly do not agree with the mask mandate for that, Thomas Summers.
Dawn Sundgren. My name is Dawn Sundgren, and I'm a third-generation lesson. I've lived in Palmer since 2000. I believe wearing a mask can at times be respectful and necessary, trying to force Palmer residents to, while one is only going to divide us and cause contention. I would appreciate it if you leave the choice to wear a mask and enhance the individual. Thank you for your time, Dawn Sundgren.
Taylor. It has come to my attention that you will be voting for a mask mandate for the city of Palmer. I am asking you not to mandate this overreach to our people. The expert excerpt, which below is from the FDA website, describes the limitations of the test that's been used since the beginning of this debacle. Each and every COVID infection assesses the numbers of cases, upon all of which we're asked to base our compliance with everything from face masks to lockdowns. Asked to watch as people move in, put out of work, businesses forced to shut down, many closed permanently. According to the World League, all the restrictions are pushing tens of thousands of people to object poverty. Alaska does not need to drive the people from poverty, especially in Canada. And there's a picture from the FDA download. You'll notice the test cannot be used reliably to indicate infection. In every positive test, it's labeled case. Even if you have symptoms, you can't reliably indicate that they're actually from COVID. Can't rule out other infections. And it can't be used to monitor treatment, which again, something means it can't be reliably tested on several models. 2019 in COV viral infection, obviously is in essence useless as a diagnostic tool. We believe in staying light, and I am one of the majority of citizens of Palmer refuse to be controlled by the likes of those who refuses to destroy what it is and simply choose their further attempt to control those that work for. You work for all of us, and our small percentage should keep this town safe from political governing. Masks were once used to silence women and people of color, but we really went backwards. As a woman, I refuse to be Muslim in silence. Thank you.
Bob Taylor. I oppose an imposition of a mask mandate for the city of Palmer. This decision to forcefully require residents and visitors to Palmer to wear masks using all available enforcement options to ensure compliance is offensive and will not result in fewer cases of COVID-19, and is extreme and isn't as in any other country compared. And many other diseases and social ills are which we don't lock up healthy people and close our society. With 97 tests to 119 masks, we hold one and multiple notes. And 21,265 total rest residents have tested positive, and mortality rate is 0.46% of noncases, less than one-half of long-term. But at that rate, what rates of COVID-19 is simply by including people who died from other health issues but test positive disease, too. Dying of COVID-19 is not the same as dying from COVID-19. With therapy, need to treat it, and the healthcare capacity that is not overwhelmed, citizens are capable of making their own decisions without threats from elected representatives. Your quarantines and healthcare staff in the pain graph is along cloth, polypropylene, paper, or other face coatings, lies in the face of logic, which is it? Are we all going to die without strict adherence or a piece of paper or a medical outlet to survive? Finally, you are conflating a CDC recommendation to wear a mask into police demand complete with unspecified enforcement question, respectfully, Bob Taylor. And then this cheap website links for a stupid option.
Sarah Thomas. Hello. My family and I consider Palmer home, though we live outside city limits. We are shopping in Palmer, likely even mask mandate exempted. We are against a mask mandate because evidence shows that the masks are a lesson for doing a fresh little show off in this press. Evidence often shows that Anchorage, a city with mask mandates, is not experiencing better outcomes because of mandate. Our governor has encouraged us to make diligent hygiene and distancing measures. Only Palmer is doing just that. The mask mandate does not warrant this kind of thing, Sarah.
Taylor Florm. Dear council members, my writing expresses my opposition to the proposed mask mandate for Palmer. I consider this twofold. Firstly, there's something I have evidence to support efficiency of masks in viral or respiratory infections. It is proven that viral particles are far too small to stop by most masks, especially in the block where many people wear. And in fact, these are highly likely, these are highly likely to harbor harmful bacteria, which then re-injures the body to the high nose amount. There has been a darkening rate to skin and other respiratory infections over the last six months due to mask mandates, but obviously not a decrease in COVID cases. And a CDC study conducted in New York, of 100 individuals hospitalized for COVID, over 70.6% had worn a mask, all most of the time, while 3.9% had worn one, had worn some of the time or others. So I would argue that prolonged mask mandates actually increases one's chances of coming back seriously sick of COVID-19. Secondly, as a very special person in the busiest, conscious shops in town, I have conversations with incredible people at Palmer all day long during this pandemic, and I can say with confidence that the majority of us do not look forward to this. The majority of us are not afraid of the virus with a 99% plus recovery rate, and will volunteer to our hearts to protect the vulnerable. However, we see the data. New mask and lockdowns are imminent, but the best detriment to what works. When you write a mandate that does not even allow for health exemption, it is critical to people that you do not do about health or science, but about rules, regulations, and compliance. Now, we do not consent. Many are turned off, and I know there are many of us who want to comply with this passed. Furthermore, to use fear as a means of control to overextend your work in the name of safety and call messages to enforce your rules is oppressive and unjust. You are elected to represent us to you all, not to control the moral and health of citizens. I hope you will hear our voice like Congress members to make a better decision, with this time we close the door.
Katie Tidwell. Do you know what makes me concerned? I'm writing regards to the simple mask mandate in Palmer, Alaska. I'm very close to having a mandate that takes away my liberty. I'm also seven months pregnant, and wearing a mask affects my ability to breathe. I get shorter breath and dizzy when I have to wear one. The Palmer tends to make, to make everyone wear a mask through a mandate. I will not let people on the field shop there. Then my business will go elsewhere. It's great for me to pray for selflessness, that I'm being free. Maybe today Palmer should represent Alaskans. To me, respect Alaskans, you double enough, you should know that we will wear masks when I'm on. By forcing through mandates such as this is very detrimental. While I understand the concerns about health risks, there is also a reason not to wear a mask because it also has health risks. I think you need to leave up to people of Palmer on whether it is best for them to wear masks when I'm on.
Holly Trueblood. I just want to voice my opinion on the mask mandate. I am strongly opposed. Compromised individuals definitely should be wearing a mask and have to see a personal disease. Otherwise, healthy individuals should not be forced to be wearing masks. We work as a people, if COVID is contracted, experience very little unless you have food like symptoms, and then go on with their lives. Thank you, Holly Trueblood.
Sarah Tudor. Good evening. I recently heard you're looking at mask mandate. I am very against a mask mandate. For those who feel to wear mask mandates, wear them, and those that feel they don't need to wear them, do not wear them. We are a free country and our city is a free city. We should not be turned into ignorance and being enforced into mandates. Thank you three times, Sarah Tudor.
Jessica, or Jessie Tumbolo. I will not comply with this if it becomes a mandate, as I have underlying health issues. I also strongly dispute whether face masks or yes, it does not work. I will not be able to make any decisions to work when I want my work served. No, on any mask mandates. Do some research on looking to Governor Kristi Noem and how she falsely handled COVID. Governor Kristi Noem, the publicist out of the state, has been the only governor that has gotten right. Not only has she left wearing a mask, wearing a mask up to the individuals, chasing down her, shut down her state or even businesses interstate. She even stands at the South Dakota State Capitol every day, no matter the weather, and prays over her state, and then walks the halls of the South Dakota State Capitol and prays over every legislature's office and elected official, and God will guide them to help them make the right decisions. South Dakota is in the best shape and condition in the interstate area. Governor Alom is a true constitutionalist, choosing example and inspiration to us all.
Renee Turner. Palmer, Chicago. Please do not implement the mask mandate in Palmer. If this is implemented, I will go elsewhere to support businesses for masks, not mandatory, and avoid businesses in Palmer or other hospitals. Sincerely, Renee Turner.
Michelle Turpin. I oppose a mask mandate in Palmer. Our liberties are still important even during the pandemic. This is a massive overreach by our local government. Thank you, Michelle Turpin.
Jay Van Deest. I'm against asking ordinance number 202016, think for a chance for it.
Tara Van Manen. Dear Mayor and City Councilmembers, I think a better question would be, did the NIH endorse peer-reviewed research data for any global agenda to come into play? If you're interested in that, please look on the peer-reviewed journal article, a lesser random trial of mask, here is medical masks and healthcare workers, which is a link to some article. Or see the attached document. For those of you who may have heard a lot of Monday, please quickly read the results and conclusion section of this problem. Result: Rates of all infection outcomes are highest in the cloth mask arm with a rate of ILI significantly higher than the cloth mask arm. Multi-risk RR equals 113.00, 95% CR, 1.69 to 100.07. Compared with the medical mask arm, cloth masks also had significantly higher rates of ILI compared with the control arm. An analyst by Masque used to show ILI RR equals 6.64, 95% CI, 1.45 to 28.65. And laboratory confirmed virus RR equals 1.72, 95% CI, 1.01 to 2.94, were significantly higher in the cloth mask group compared with the medical mask group. Meditration of cloth masks by particles was almost 97% and medical masks were 4%. Conclusion: This study is the first RCT of cloth masks, and results caution against the use of cloth masks. This is an important finding to inform occupational health and safety. Moisture retention reuse of cloth masks in poor filtration results in increased risk of infection. Further research is needed to inform the widespread use of cloth masks globally. However, as caution and measure, cloth masks should not be recommended for HCWS, particularly in high risk situations. Bad lines need to be updated. Disconsider what science demonstrated about mask use before anything is coming, but a mandate mask in the city of Palmer will incur those who have pledged to serve and frustrate our city's economic realty. Thank you very service. Tara Van Manen.
Conrad, this day, I'm going to see. Afternoon. About mask mandate, the governor said that there are increasing numbers of first responders and the like that are testing positive recently. These same people are among the 84-plus percent of people who've been wearing masks for several weeks. Ask yourself, why is that? If they have been wearing masks, lots of face shields, and are getting positive test results, obviously masks and the like don't work. If they did, these fresh responders would be protected and would not have positive tests. Why then? The government's requires citizens for supplement that does not protect their health, but actually makes health worse. According to the CDC, since at least 2005, they have been saying that masks don't work to prevent the spread of viruses. That's why we never wear masks for seasonal flu and the common cold, which, by the way, both have a higher mortality rate than COVID-19. I will later inform you of the CDC statistics of flu as a mortality rate of 3.65%. We know that the CDC's own documentation with the mortality rate of COVID-19 is only between 0.02% and 0.04%. If you take out all the deaths without underlying complications, by definition of COVID-19, it is not even a pandemic, but barely meets your current smart fault rate. I am not denying that the virus exists, but it is not as bad as we're being told. In contrast, you know from years of scientific research that lockdowns, new mask mandates are very bad for health. This improves emotional, physical, mental, and psychological health. Can you tell me what the increase in suicides are tend to 2020? I will tell you. He is much higher since the lockdowns began. That is true for the entire country, especially among our younger people. I would recommend for people who have underlying health conditions, weakened immune systems, or are in the higher risk category, should take precautions. I would choose to look at the data from the objective point of view. Notice that all across the country, as soon as the mask mandate comes into play, all of the numbers start to spike. I would also urge you to take a different approach, in fact, than Anchorage, so Valley doesn't have to follow in the misgotten steps. Thank you.
John Viera. To the Palmer City Council, as a concern with the Palmer's city limits and business owner not in city limits, and am opposed to a mask mandate trying to be forced in our community. Anchorage has been forcing our masks for months, and the positive cases of COVID have skyrocketed over the last two months. Masking improvement is not to be effective in preventing the spread of COVID, but it also doesn't take a hard to study to do that. This mask mandate is coming at the worst possible time for our local small businesses. We have suffered through the summer trying to keep our businesses afloat since March. Most of the massed Valley area is not in favor of wearing a mask and being forced to do casual shopping this holiday season. It's going to push people to shop online rather than supporting our local businesses. This is going to be devastating to the businesses in downtown Palmer and our local community. Instead of mimicking a failed mandate that Anchorage implemented, you should open our community, support local businesses, and set a new standard in dealing with COVID. We all know the risk. Let us choose what is best for ourselves, our families, and our businesses, instead of closing our businesses and locking people down. The system implies to help the high-risk, eat-want-our-community. I personally know many people who want to help others during this pandemic, but just need to be told what to do. The proper approach to dealing with COVID is helping those in need, those in need of help, and letting the rest of us get back to work. 99-plus percent of us will get COVID, and we don't work with them 37 days, and then move on with our lives. The people in the community that want to mask up have every right to do so, and those of us that want to put masks free, life chooses to be
And those of us that want to put masks free, life chooses to use them without masks sincerely, John Vera. Nancy Box, note any mask mandates or any or attendance restrictions. This is about the short thing, sincerely, Nancy Box. Kim Borugan Inc., I'm writing to please review stand by me against the craziness that has hit this nation and the world. Do not issue more mandates for Palmer. We are intelligent, caring people who can make decisions for our own health while being considered to our neighbors. We do not need bigger governments that will make us live outside our commission. We are a state of independent, level-headed individuals who value our freedoms and don't suffer from disease. Please don't capulate and change our values and beliefs. I am on a lot of medical illness and some of the many numbers that I have been hearing from conservative doctors and hospitals, I'm receiving reports and numbers which check for this, including low mortality numbers. Yes, I've had friends that got COVID. So I'm not sure, but after most deaths around the world, they have had other issues combined in their immune systems. The natural solution, zinc, vitamin C, the hydrazine, chlorine, and E among other things, they have all come through the flu well. If COVID is so bad, then why isn't the total mortality rate higher this year than any other year? A rational explanation is that deaths are just attributed to COVID, or maybe attributed to the flu or other comorbidities that people have. As of this writing, I have worn a mask less than five times. If a city mandates mask, I don't go. If a business mandates mask, I don't go. The local doctors I interact with don't believe masks are beneficial, nor they have licensing works that require them. Like me, they see just bars for one day's control. Like me, they see the reports on the number of FX masks or how many people. I am convinced, though, we'll look back at this event in our history as a turning point in escalation of the downfall. Not because of COVID, but because of our response to it. So many unwise policies have been put in place because government officials and their constitution, constitute, two ends, were reaching out of fear and not thinking through the long-term ramifications of the decisions. Our short sign list and fear has closed businesses and left people exposed financially. It has left only disabled people isolated. It's quarantined a lot of home with their users. It has added unhealthy stress to lives that we're really hanging on to again. It has left the next generation sadly undereducated. These are the numbers that concern me. While we strive to keep with the popular narrative and tell ourselves that we are current and caring, we aren't really considering the social harmony perpetuated on our people and electoral ramifications that we have. I am an intelligent wife, mom, homeschool educator, and business owner, but I'm not a doctor or scientist. There are, however, eleven thousand nine hundred seventy-five thousand scientists, thirty-four thousand five hundred six hundred and doctors, and even six hundred twenty thousand three hundred fifty thousand concerned citizens and so forth that have signed the great guarantee of operation. Mark Wakefield, dear City Council members, it is sad that you are trying to push this mask mandate on other people and businesses around the local town Palmer. I am planning people that made the jump from Anchorage to Valley because of their mask mandate. They come out to eat, relax, and shop at our stores because they don't want to wear masks. The mask mandate in Palmer will drive businesses out of our community and over in LaSilla, Big Lake, and Houston. Most of our great downtown shops have already ordered for the holiday sales. The mask mandate will hamper these sales and put an unnecessary financial strain on our local shops. Masks should be a matter of choice, it is our personal freedom to choose what and how to best protect our health. Where will this intrusion stop? Will soon be illegal to smoke cigarettes in Palmer? They cause sickness and result in death. Baby fast food will be banned. Obesity is a real problem too, causing sickness and death. Alcohol too, should be closed, the water and liquor stores. Where is it that you think our personal freedom of choice stops and now we share it with all? As elected officials, we hired you to recruit businesses and increase visitors to our lovely little town in Palmer. We do not allow you to run the businesses and our wonderful customers out of town and go to LaSilla. A mask mandate will force businesses out of Palmer and over in LaSilla. People are already driving from lost Anchorage out to the Valley to shop and eat because of the mandates. Without this is impossible, masks are only personal. Preferences do not shut down our votes. Mark Wakefield. Mayor and House members, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address you concerning ordinance number twenty dash zero sixteen. I am totally opposed to mandatory mask mandate as the show's rights ordinance. I won't go into the discussion of whether or not masks are effective for COVID-19. Most people I see around town shopping or other businesses are actually already wearing a mask. The mandatory mask mandate has stopped some people, including myself, from shopping and visiting businesses in Palmer. These businesses are always struggling to survive in the hands of a mask mandate that hurts them. But leave my house, wear the mask on, go to a restaurant, take my mask off to eat. What then does a mask mandate make? I will separate from a medical condition that makes my recovery difficult. I wear a mask when I'm mad and just go river runs and so could be. Many people that are concerned about their health and others are already wearing masks, but those who are not concerned will not wear a mask anyway. Cities around the world have tried to implement mask mandates without this desired result. Anchorage has tried a mask mandate and the different numbers of cases that keep rising. The Palmer's two main Alaskans best kept secret, let remain touch without the herd mentality that's currently speaking in this state and country, though personally campaign against any member that votes in favor of bringing up a Palmer personal freedom of choice in the next election. Thank you for allowing this opportunity to address your strongly urge to knock out ordinance number twenty dash zero sixteen. Our society is turning, though our actions are not the hallmark of healthy, just the populace. Kim Wakechoff, please do not placing mandate for the people in City Palmer for masks for the next sixty days. There's this name you may all have heard about called the community. It's got, here's the science behind it, whereas the science is very mixed about efficiency of masks. Masks might help contain spread of the virus, but they might not. Now unless people sanitize their hands every time before they touch their own mask, wearing them for more than about five minutes creates a damp, dark, petri dish on their own faces that isn't healthy for the weather. Think please about how many mandates there have been in cities where regardless of virus is spread, based upon the fact that this is a highly contagious food, most of us are going to get it absent a vaccine. I don't wear masks, I am a very healthy individual and I've had COVID-19. It wasn't a big deal for me, so if you mandate that I wear a mask, I'll either choose or make it well, or whatever that you call such a thing, or refuse to go on to Palmer. How much of being passed over, especially during the Christmas season, can little Palmer take and still survive? Remind people to be healthy and avoid smoking the line junk food. We both think that healthy habit is like walking. The job had a largely unenforceable rule, underbooks that will disturb the right people more. Those who want to wear masks can, of course, but those who don't want to should not be nutted into, since you can't prove they actually retard the spread of the disease, but you can easily create the ill health economy in Palmer. There are wolves, you hear it's a sheep. If you now then mandate that we're all so stupid like sheep, though we can't decide for ourselves to wear or not a mask, it will bring out the wolfish side of some of us who's, wear your mask and stay out of my face. Rachel Weaver, please vote against mask mandate. Encouraging people to wear a mask is great, making it mandatory is a step too far. I'm not against wearing a mask, I'm against being forced to wear a mask. It only adds to our rebellious spirit and animosity when it comes to mandate. I just hope to benefit based on the numbers in other states and cities that are implementing masks. Please keep Palmer free from, add this to restrictions. Rachel Weaver. Kristen Wedle Leitner, David D. To All, my name is Kristen Webb Leitner, a small business owner in Palmer. I oppose ordinance number twenty dash zero sixteen. The depression principle is not the correct path to follow. This mandate will reverently harm our community and we may all may suffer the consequences well into the future. Our community trusts our physical, financial, being and our city, the one we love so much, will be encumbered by litigation for years and years to come. The linear approach is another path. The one track solution misses all of the other tracks you cannot see. It assumes we are all the same, but in actuality, we're all different. People have different underlying health issues, different ages. Some of us have had COVID, some of us have not. Some think masks work, some do not. If masks are made to be mandatory, so too can other proposed measures. We're in the violations of an individual's right to choose himself over an in. Now what number of COVID incidents or deaths do we put to rest the idea that masks may be meaningful impact? Those who wish to wear masks should react themselves should, those who don't, don't. Please pray that we don't become divided over pandemic deaths, a survival rate of ninety-four to ninety-seven, or ninety-four to ninety-nine point ninety-nine seven percent. My prayers go out to the community and for people in Palmer and to those representing us on council. I love our community, we have the best little town. Please vote no. Sally Wingland, never before have we isolated, never before have we isolate, isolated, well. If masks were proven to prevent, I would be for this, but it has not, so I say no. If a person is sick, they should be responsible to stay home. Another no to ordinance that will be telling nightmare perhaps. Please note the no vote, Sally Wingland. John Weisler, Palmer City Council, please do not implement the mask mandate in Palmer. I already started shopping exclusively in locations without mandated masks. If this is implemented, I will go elsewhere to support businesses where masks are not mandatory and avoid doing this in Palmer whenever possible. I'm a advocate for the service of my country, to keep our liberties and freedoms. I thought we all enjoyed, but there are many in our state and we can't feel about their freedoms and want to see it in a way. I'm very disappointed in this plan to reduce our consumer. Renee Wellington, I'm writing in opposition to propose emergency ordinance number twenty dash zero sixteen, enacting emergency mask. Yes, the government issued emergency alert, U2 video asking citizens to mask. This was a complete misuse of emergency alert system leading to panic and urgent response. It does not make it mandatory and it is not law, not a law. This proposed ordinance does not accommodate those possibilities. This proposed ordinance on the laws you use facial to mask cannot be more than. It does not allow deceased people to be free masks or shields, though medical conditions and maybe a hospital wearing them. I hear too often that those who are unable to wear masks or shields are being selfish. The actually is those who want to post masks and shields on those that are unable to wear them due to medical conditions that are being selfish. There are many people with medical conditions, PTSD, and claustrophobia that masks and shields pose a health risk too. You are asking these individuals to be accommodated through alternative means of providing services such as curtside or delivery. This is not taking into consideration that you are assigning food and medicine to them especially if you expect grocery stores to follow this. These other services are not available to provide food and medicine immediately as it is to those who are able to don a mask or shield. These people should not have to live their own health at risk because the sponsor of this ordinance says so. We're standing to practice medicine without license. You're making medical decisions for people. Dr. Joe Valerius is a sponsor to this ordinance. Medical providers do not prescribe medicine or food without first evaluation. This ordinance proposes to implicate the laws of practicing medicine federally for the rest of the council members and our practice of describing a lengthy treatment for all and not doing due diligence, performing appropriate physical exam and history. Again, people have medical conditions, they make masks, that make wearing masks or shields a danger to their health and this ordinance does not appropriately accommodate them. Considering there is the right to use all available enforcement options to ensure compliance to the proposed ordinance. Exactly what is that supposed to mean? You are asking that ordinance be passed, but there is no clear-cut information of what enforcement means. This leaves a lot to be debated. If assembly agrees to enact this ordinance, it is written that it is irresponsible. It appears to be asked that businesses are to please comply and shall hard or compelled removal of such individuals on premises. Again, this requires ordinances and any food and medicine asking the grocery stores from your people from their business. Heidi Weber, Palmer City Council, please do not implement a mask mandate in Palmer. This is actually, if this is actually implemented, if my family are to go elsewhere to support businesses, masks are not mandatory and avoid new business in Palmer whenever possible. Consider heading with, with. Hannah Wilder, to human being concerned, I'm a thirty-year-old resident of Alaska and admittedly opposed to any mandate for residents who are damaged, face boundaries, or anything that inhibits neural respiratory function. This is a clear violation of civil rights and indiscriminate discrimination. It gives those either more medical and religious assumptions as per Alaska Section eighteen forty-eighty-two hundred. Ignore a mask mandate will continue to add pressure to already suffering local businesses who require to enforce this mandate. It will lose businesses due to those who, like myself and my family, will discontinue future raising businesses whose views are anti-gubernatorial. Due also to opening businesses implicates to personal lawsuits to the violation of cultural civil rights. Masks will not refer to being effective means of slowing the spread of a highly susceptible virus and is only adding to traumatize and already traumatize people. And even if they have been proven to be effective, it is still a violation of civil rights to force people to wear them. We think people of Palmer, Alaska have a civil right to equal and fair access to any public accommodation without fear of discrimination due to religious beliefs and your rights and convictions. I request that my comments be read to the public record of special meaning on January eight, twenty twenty. Hannah Wilder. Shannon Wilder, I oppose any low-force mandates requiring citizens to wear masks, shields, and/or to quarantine. Let the thicker and mean compromise make the choice on their own violations to defend themselves. I have a constitutional right to my freedom of choice in this matter and I am committed my single on the position of mandatory mask. I require that this be noted on my behalf in the special city council meeting on Wednesday and November eighth, twenty twenty. Also attached, this document, I request to be read in the meeting. Thank you. Shannon Wilder. Here it is, three pages brought back. Melissa Wilkins, to human being concerned, I would like to make my voice known that I respectfully disagree with the mask mandate being brought up next week. If people would like to wear masks, then that is their choice, but it shouldn't be forced. I've heard it said that wearing a mask to keep virus out is equivalent to someone putting out the chain of fence to keep ants out of their operation. We know it has a scientific data, they've worked to protect people, they've worked very well keeping people clear, virtue signaling, and vision. Also, we've required people with a false sense of security, safety. If someone wants to wear masks, find, if not, let she find as well. Sincerely, Melissa Wilkins. Josette Wilcox, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to share my opinion on this matter. Here it is. Perhaps instead of our council taking in the oriental stance, lest it is a one group but evenly aimed at another, the council will be wise to take a more positive approach to the matter. Instead of risking lawsuits towards the ability, and equally, at least half of your young, at least half of your constituents might have approaches more cross-the-home representative people. We are known for coming together, you're in tough times, you're Alaskan, who don't value government overreach, but do value each other. We are some of the most respectful people in the planet, we are also very stern to stop, who aren't going to back down when we feel threatened. And that's if you, this whole thing, both sides feel threatened. One because of the fear of the virus and the other the fear of losing constitutional rights, and one reason Alaska is famous. rights and one reason Alaska is famous, minimal government. Here is my suggestion. Use global funds to commission more local artists to create posters, deliver on it. Commission another Palmer message to create a strong positive message, not preachy or funny, something like a poster like World War II with Rosie the Ranger. Next, commission some of our incredibly talented seamstress, Taylor's Quilters, to make masks that are significantly designed just for Palmer. Silver chip signs can help with that, I'm sure. Then run a incentive program for all businesses, like a discount, tax under mortgages if they require masks. Give them that specially designed ones to help people who don't have one. This would financially help, help meaning our community that are hurting because of COVID. It would ease the programs aside by giving them the support they need and it would ease the constitutional voices. Even they will agree that businesses has no right to refuse service, so there's no argument. In fact, I think this might heal many wounds that have been flipped on both sides. Palmer isn't a town of foreigners or Seattleites. We really don't need mandates, we need calm, we are calmers. These families may have had strong differences, but they will thrive as community always outweigh, always outweigh them. Now, this is a time for our council, for you, to show that you cannot only face this virus effectively, but that you can also, you know, find your last, your last names. Not an easy feat, but you can do it. Josette Wilcox. Jennifer Williams. I am writing to ask you to please reiterate in acting mask mandate in Palmer. I am not against the measures being recommended, in fact, uncommonly. However, I feel that making it a mandate is an unnecessary decision. Many businesses in town are already wearing masks. This kind of action is not the way to get everyone working together in the city. A heavy mandate is going to make the city council seem like an adversary instead of an ally to open people. As I said, I'm not opposed to masks in social distancing, but I truly feel that we would all be much better served by a good PR campaign instead of. Corey Williamson. To human being concerned, I would like to voice my opinion that masks for facial coverage should never be required, both since or mandated by any local or by any level of government. It should only be worn on voluntary basis. There is no conclusive evidence that cloth masks or face covers prevent the coronavirus from spreading. However, studies have found that wearing masks for facial coverage can be detrimental to the health of the wearer. And in 95, as very limited protection was for anti-coronavirus, for the sake of the citizens who live in Palmer and who travel in Palmer, I urge you not to convert it to being mandatory mask or a mandate. A. Wilson. A mask mandate is ridiculous. Masks do not stop COVID. It is a complete false sense of security. Studies are actually showing that they are harmful. Don't be like other places. Think masks are oppressive and don't work anyway. And then she has a additional link to go with her email. Sarah Wilson. To human being concerned, my family and I respectfully ask you to vote against any mandatory mask mandate in Palmer, Alaska. As a town with young kids, we kept ourselves in small circles, been respectful, no more masks in other places. That said, it is not the purpose of the government to dictate what is healthy and enforced in everyone. The truth is that there's plenty of studies that are for and against masks. If you say masks are right and cases go up, then you inevitably draw the conclusion that you need masks for everyone. If you say masks are right and cases go down, then you inevitably draw the conclusion that you need masks to keep those cases down. I guess there is no way to make someone believe masks are unnecessary if you're in a community in mind and that's fine. However, I've found that many people don't realize that there is just as many scientific studies that conclude that masks either make no difference or may even be harmful to wear. I hope that you will take those into account for once, but the ones that could lead them to realize that this is 100% science that they agree upon. Regardless, if masks are good and if masks are not, it is not your job to tell us how to live. It is, that is not your position as a governmental official. I've seen a highway mask, that people looking at people without masks and fear disdain in thinking that they suddenly don't care or somehow hurt them. They don't take into account my friend who endured weight and was treated by a mask. They don't take into account my son whose asthma is affected by the mask. He keeps his on as long as possible, but at some point, he can hear his reading change. It doesn't take into account the fact that in science, things are absolutely for certain. There can be hearing and opinions. No one should be forced too much under the other. It doesn't take into account the hard of hearing, the children who are scared about because they cannot accurately assess facial recognition or non-verbal communication or the lack of human connection that is mentally affecting our population. I know you might say that within your mandate, that it would take into account mutual and physical needs that will let them escape the mask. But how does it help them when they are continually having to explain themselves to people who approach them in the grocery store and manning them with their masks? How does it help their mental health when they feel disdain and harsh eyes that follow them rather than go? How does it help them when they feel that they are making it difficult to cope with, or not able to cope when they finally came to masks in order to avoid conflicts and that approaches them? And your point, how does things is actually helping our population now on COVID? There is so much more to our life than COVID. Currently, everything is being studied upon based on one thing, COVID. And while we do need to make decisions about COVID, that doesn't mean we should worry about everything else. And why in order to make sure anything else out, we cannot do it. It is not your job to correct people to do that. That one was Sarah Wilson, this one is Sierra Wilson. I would like to do some basic math for you. P.S. Sorry, my last email to Russia Maxi Gavels is roughly a 3% infection of COVID-19 within the population. As you'll notice from pretty numbers, that is lower than Anchorage has maximum data. I would like to do some basic math for you as well. I'd like to point out is that Anchorage has a population of 285,634. They also have a mask mandate in place and they have 13,501 cases. That is roughly 5% of the population that's COVID-19. Anchorage also has had 60 deaths total. This is for, this gives COVID-19 an official death rate of .0002% in Anchorage in proportion to its population. The Manuska Valley has a population of 800, yeah, no, it's 88,995. We don't not have any mask mandate in place and we have 2,414 cases of COVID-19 and no mask mandate in place. Manuska Valley has had five deaths, this gets us to death rate of .0006% in proportion to our population. It seems to me that social distancing is the most effective way to avoid COVID, not a mask mandate. That is the profoundly variable equation. We are further apart here, not masked. Thank you. Hello, this is my personal opinion on the mask mandate. I do not feel the city has constitutional rights to back this kind of mandate. I feel that Palmer will lose a lot of businesses on this mandate like this. I'm a business owner and I've been told such by many clients that I will lose their business. I also have yet to see truly definitive data stating that masks do prevent the coronavirus. I would like to see the data, the studies and the laws that can back a mandate like this. Until someone can show me these things, I think this shouldn't be the only thing that I think. Jessica Wiegert. To human being concerned, I'm writing on behalf of my concerns regarding ordinance 20-016. My concern isn't of masks themselves. My concern is of white evidence and being used to justify more amounts to the deputy mayor telling citizens of Palmer that we're not responsible enough to make decisions for ourselves. Citing an article written in the frontiersman on November 13th, 2020, it says, "There have been 2,224 COVID cases among Matu residents. Although 626 were from Palmer and 247 of those reacted through rocky frontiersmen." The 2018 census year old states there is 7,306 residents of Palmer. This amounts to a .03% of the population with an active COVID infection. According to the THSS website, it says that there is 135 adult non-ICV, ICVs at Matu regional of 64 are still available. It also says that all of 14 ICVs are occupied, but it does not clarify how many, if at all of those are COVID related. And none of this clarifies whether specifically residents of Palmer are not. People like myself who works in healthcare, now IC numbers, will show me quickly depending on what patients to be treated for, i.e., they can be moved to another unit if necessary if they no longer need to be treated in ICU. It's also well known to me that most hospitals are anywhere between 75 and 90% capacity on average, not just due to COVID. So in conclusion, what concerns me is the deputy mayor does not seem to base her opinion on this matter on the facts and science, but rather seems she's pushing her own personal opinion and those of her personal Facebook friends and the Facebook group, who backs the moms for social justice. She also seems to exclusively advertise this upcoming need to those groups and not broadly to the entire city of Palmer, so that all citizens have an opportunity to give their opinion on the matter. This does not instill any faith in me that she's here to govern for all and not just the people that voted for her. It is important to remember that the residents of Palmer and the business owners whose company is this wealthy do know what's best for themselves, the businesses and the livelihoods. Allows to make the decisions we need to make on a personal basis. We know what's best for us, not you. That's for us, Jessica.
You ready? Are you ready?
No, I'm just making sure it's all six over. Just do it. Okay. All right. Then. Yeah. Right. Frank Winder. To human being concerned, I recently was on Matu on a Facebook page where they posted that Palmer was considered a mask mandate. I want to voice my concern on such a mandate that we use. Anchorage is an example, also as a mask mandate. You'll see that a large number of Anchorage residents are driving to the balance of their shopping. Places in Lissila, for example, are packed. Palmer follows suit and issues a mandate, you'll see Palmer resident heading to Lissila to do their shopping. This in turn will have a major effect on the city's Palmer economy. Also, this will drive more people to be in less store, therefore exposing more extremely close contact. What I think would be more helpful for both our city and the just outside of Palmer, and the people who frequently shop in Palmer, would be to ask that we do, we only take orders, ask that we please wear a mask if we cannot remain in six feet distance. Issuing mandates, wanting to divide in the community, we love. I believe it took, I believe that we took the path of education, not forcing, you'll see a more positive outcome. Thank you, Frank Winder. Bridgette Ritter. To Palmer City Council, I am totally against having you put a mask mandate in Palmer. I think that if we're involved, we can figure this out all by ourselves on how to keep safe. Thank you, Bridgette. Jay Slan, Worktandin.
Worktandin.
Worktandin. To declare, this is solid no vote for a mask mandate in Palmer. Anchorage has 280,000 people who has had just under 13,000 cases of Corona with 60 deaths. That's a .47% chance of death, not including any reason in comparison with the virus of the death. Matu has 108,000 people and five deaths with 2,322 confirmed cases. That's a .20% chance of death. Anchorage has had a mask mandate in place while Matu's not. Anchorage has done a very good job to support small businesses, schools, churches and the financial wellbeing of its citizens while Matu has allowed its citizens to make choices based on what's rightfully in their family. You are almost six times more likely to test positive in Anchorage. And if you do test positive, you are more than 10 times more likely to die from the virus. This does, doesn't include the deaths by city staff who are losing everything, children are not being in school or people are having a social network to eat lunch with and discuss with things online. This doesn't include the additional domestic and child abuse taken within quarantine. This doesn't include the drug and alcohol abuse taken within quarantine. One city has too much right to protect the entire population of your own and the others do not seem to make it work. Apples to apples, tell me wrong, how are mandates helping everyone? She's too much. Daniel Witt, the Z. Dear members of Palmer and of the Palmer City Council, my family and I moved to this lovely town nearly a decade ago. We virtually decided within the same month, but now it's just outside of the boundaries, so cannot vote on elections for city council, even though our address with Palmer is our city. We do nearly all of our business and activities within the city and my kids participate in the sports for Palmer High School. I love Palmer and decided to save a new city council, aggressively positioning the council to act as oppressive, but the Lord is loving the council after the power-hungry Anchorage capital. If this mandatory mask mandate is enacted, I will then will drive the extra few minutes to save the businesses to Lissila. They have F.R.'s and F.R.'s stores and local stores and are teaching shops commercials as well. And they don't have a mask mandate, while I might prefer coming to Palmer for my shopping needs, I will choose to take my medicines elsewhere, for liberation, mask mandate, the clothes on the people of the city of Palmer. With Christmas around the corner, I can only foresee such a mandate being put in hardship to small businesses over fair town, as people choose to do goodness elsewhere or in other ways that are more than willing to a mask mandate, having young, from a high, from a handful of city council members who think they know more than the people. I ask the council to seriously consider the economic impacts such as dictating the power of our small town at this period of time of year after all brain and difficult year following lockdowns and a lack of tourism that had huge impact on revenues for the year. Allow individual businesses to determine their mask policies, which will make them responsible for implementing a newly established mandate from the city. This entire plan seems to place too much on this on fragile businesses to hear about an unnecessary mandate that ultimately will have lower impact on spreading the virus. It may have a large impact on the bottom line, so many already settled businesses. We truly care about our community, please consider this. David Witt. To the city council members, I'm speaking up against the proposed mandate for the, from Matu citywide. There are several who is wide, but I will only go into the most obvious reasons at this time. You should already know, being on council, the city's not doing all of this, which I believe this, this is due for two reasons. One, the total lockdown business of early this year, and two, the corporate mask policies of corporate F.R.'s. These policies have caused people to stop lying and bringing it, and I take other businesses and dollars outside of Palmer. Now you're proposing that you drive one little business that's still being done in Palmer out of town. This would be devastating to small businesses and the city's budget. I could very well cause many businesses to close permanently. With the latest shutdown of city buildings, there will not be normal holiday czars that we took, which in turn will not have the people shop in their local businesses while already being in town. These people come from all over to these zones and it's not just immediate challenges. Now we have regulations that wouldn't affect the last day of Palmer's financial. Are you, are you people intentionally trying to copy and subdue the businesses of our motherfucking town? Shame on you and the left feminist group who you're aligning with, who are trying to Dear city clerk and deputy mayor, COVID-19 has proven to knock these panels underneath making it hard to read, which is usually seen when looking at the CDC website for daily townings of the actual COVID cases. And then has CDC data link in here. The likelihood of dying from COVID is 99% and the X quality changes depending on age. Most to die who have also tested positive for COVID have died from other diseases. For instance, cancer, long-suffered heart disease, complications from diabetes or Alzheimer's, etc., they did not die from COVID. In Alaska, in 2020, an average of 15 people died of heart disease every week. The total was 686 heart disease deaths this year, whereas the 28 number of people who died from COVID in Alaska is 99. According to Anchorage Daily News, the COVID only death counts a frequent and slower on CDC website. These numbers not justify masking all people in Palmer. People get the flu, people get colds. This is what these COVID numbers are closer to, yearly flu and colds. Lots of people have caught COVID and recovered. I know three people personally who caught COVID and got over it. There are excellent curative and therapy medicines to combat COVID and there is also our national news system. Even if you feel that COVID is ravaging Alaska, masks can be one, Anchorage didn't work and will not work in Palmer either. Even if you feel that COVID is ravaging Alaska, masks can be one Anchorage didn't work and will not work in Palmer either. And then she has listed multiple names. Six names. Additionally, masking children, only within two, will have psychological, social, neurological effects on an entire generation, which will far outweigh any actual benefits of the population. Who discourages masked kids under five? Let me interpret the article. Verentina, just a little bit. She was an overall seriously child and warns of potential acts of wear and mask on American's psycho-social development in the ages of six and above. She's not really committing, you know? Children need social contact to develop, explain and discipline to functioning adults. And this includes learning and responding to facial cues. Masking children will have long-lasting disastrous consequences that some may not justify for the actual sick people and the actual deaths. This needs to stop here now. Fear, your fear, wanting to people's freedom. We'll only be forcing people into invasion, masking them to, to, Catherine Wood. And then she also resent this same email.
And she's, she's over three years.
Yes, sir. No, but that email, the word and the exact same, it was just sent at a different time.
Okay.
And this one is, and then this is Lawrence Wood. The top is, says Lawrence, but when he signs it, it's a very dark, seven pages later, it says Larry.
I know, same guy, same guy. He lives up on Lazy Mountain, just up through.
Yeah. Well, then he's the next one. Yeah. Oh, excuse me. Here's all his attachments.
Good. Make time reading.
Right, okay. Testimony of Lawrence D. Wood, an oppositional Palmer ordinance twenty-eight zero sixteen. I am a six-six-six-year resident of Alaska and a fifty-nine-year resident of the Palmer area. My foster family's been here since nineteen forty-seven, my grandparents since nineteen fifty-two, and my father's family since nineteen fifty-four. I have seen Palmer evolve over the years. Ordinance twenty-eight zero sixteen is a bad idea unnecessarily based upon conjecture. There is no substantive evidence that, that masking and social distancing produce any benefit in reducing the infection rate of the virus. For good, the ordinance makes some interesting assumptions, perhaps citing any authority for this mandate. One, the ordinance is based upon a recommendation by the CDC. The recommendation does not imply require or demand enforcement. Given the exemptions, this ordinance is nothing more than filth and progress of politicians who desire to go through mistaken beliefs and subventions among the general population. Two, this ordinance does not affect just the citizens of Palmer. The entire street avenue, including my side of the, now needs to get regular travels to Palmer for good services. I can guarantee you, I can guarantee that I will wipe, wipe all Palmer's businesses if this ordinance is passed. I doubt that I will be the only one. I am simply tired of stuff, of brain-desiring idiots using an elected officer to pretend that what they do is in the public interest and is their problem after self-importance and guilt. Three, the justification for this ordinance is expressed as preservation of health and safety of the community. There is no substantive goal cited for this ordinance, other than to align the state that aforementioned. Again, the justification is a recommendation that lacks credible evidence. Four, there is nothing stated or any studies cited in support of the ordinance that would give rise to the belief that the ordinance will produce any benefit, other than to state the CDC recommends masking and social distancing. Five, the ordinance states that the city of Palmer has the authority to not enforce a mandate, I disagree. I cannot find any authority, including that of the government, which calls for anything other than testing by order by a state medical officer or the, or the quarantine in isolation of those in no respect to being infected. The state cannot force treatment. Therefore, pardon me, for the line, excuse me, enforcement of quarantine isolation required for ordering. And then here is a packet of fifteen pages of attachments. Last, who, last, who, who is he? I oppose the mask mandate in Palmer. This is an infringement of rights. It is not the local government's job to protect the population from illness, especially at the cost of premiums. Nor is a mask a fundamental choice, not a collective one. Thank you for listening. Ray, Palmer City Council, please read this into your face. Anchorage has had a mask mandate for many years, has still continued to climb. I have also learned that taking the right to be fresh away from people is going to flatten the sort of virus. Viruses have always been around and always will be. People need to take personal responsibility for themselves. Be healthy, take vitamins, supplements, exercise, go to fashions, and help people. Reaching the immune system by exposing it to bacteria in this world. Refreshing is not a job that any government agency may have with the viral virus. All masks do is give false sense of security, but if you want to wear one, one means two. If you are sick, stay home. If you live in fear, then you lose ability to then be happy and present. I understand people die and that is very unfortunate, with the number of deaths in the U.S. not far from happening these years. Hopefully, the right choice will be to allow Palmer businesses, owners, and residents the sovereign right to make their own responsible decisions. Any loss of customers, or any small businesses owners who have already had one. I will exercise my right to choose, where to spend my money, and it will be Palmer if this ordinance goes through. Thank you very much, sir. Sincerely. Cynthia Yule. Please agree, please have this letter to record. There is really no proof that wearing a face mask will help lift off the virus. Anchorage already has a face mask mandate, and they have by far the highest numbers of positive COVID cases. The CDC said seventy percent of those tested positive wore face masks all the time. If you can perform CPR right through a face mask, I really wonder how much do they are doing. We're told to wear a mask, distance, and then to wash our hands. If we follow this, follow this list, we have now put on face masks with dirty hands. Our masks are now from Townline, and we are placing it over our mouth and nose. Freshen, invite in deep breaths, unadjusted for help. Concentrate on habit of the immune system. Working with the elderly and wearing a face mask all the time is really boring and a hassle. You cannot see your face to see your expressions and reading your lips immediately. So it's very difficult. So isolate and, and be careful, but mandating wearing a face mask really the answer, or is it, or is the government overreach playing games, say, as long as what we can, can't do? This issue is really becoming de-icid. There are really no solid facts supporting my mask to stop COVID. The government does not have the right to mandate wearing a face mask in hopes that the vaccine will. Governor Zimmerman. Dear mayor agrees, I am concerned about reducing masks because of the stadium. I believe that according to the constitution, we should have the freedom to choose to take the risk of sickness, of a sickness. I leave forcing us to wear masks heavily traveling our rights as free individuals. I do not agree with the mask mandate. I feel strongly that forcing us to wear masks is succumbing to the demands of the Democratic Party. Please stand against this agenda respectfully, Governor Zimmerman.
Karen, you need a break.
Always leave one jet. Thank you. Bethany's, uh, Linsky. It is kind of my intention that mask mandates on the next, on the next one of this for Palmer. I strongly encourage you to do the right thing in protecting citizens, free against that mandate of masks. Personal experience, they made a family sicker than having where the, to mandate, to make a mandate and say it's good for everyone is going against the constitution and against our personal freedoms. Everybody's different, and when you take away choice, you're not affecting our freedom. If masks were efficient, they may be seen in big difference in COVID nineteen cases in those areas that were them. If COVID nineteen is only hospitalizing point zero one percent of the mask-suited community, that is less than even the flu. Many of us have already had COVID nineteen, and for the majority of us is much like the flu. I'm not downplaying that there are those who have been extremely affected by this, but there are more people committing suicide, higher incidence of losing families, and a large amount of depression that comes from these strong-arm tactics that harm much more than the point zero one percent of the community. Those that are at a higher risk are taking precautions. Those that are around others that are at higher risk are taking precautions. The general public is taking precautions to wash my hands and stay home and say, I can speak because I also have an autoimmune illness, and unfortunately, masks makes me much sicker. I know many others, this is, this is the case. Your district may, and me and many others, are one to create a mandate to wear a mask. The best thing to do for COVID nineteen is to eat healthy and be active and enjoy life. Don't live in fear. The side effects of mandating masks and violating the constitution will cause much greater harm to the community than allowing for choices. Sincerely, Bethany. Joshua Linsky. Dear mayor, deputy mayor, and city council members, thank you for taking the time to share my letter as well as many others. I'm shocked. I appreciate your attention in this very important decision you have before you. I'm a degree expert from the Declaration of Independence. All men are created equal, and they are endowed by their creative or certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. The point that I'd like to draw attention to is that liberty is an unalienable right given to all things, and liberty is freedom. In America, we have a freedom of speech, the freedom to choose where we go, and how we live our lives. We even have the freedom to order child will be so choose. This ridiculous false narrative of a pandemic has violated the rights of the entire world on Capitol Subols, being spooked by the public, by Bill Gates, and others funding media outlets. I suggest you to take a step back from the doctor couch narrative who has not actually treated a COVID nineteen patient. And why you video this video and post it on, from front and off, from front line doctors on their website and other one, would be a great starting point. The common cold is a coronavirus, so COVID nineteen is religiously transmittive common cold. Please do your own research and stop reminding on mainstream media. The decision you have before you to mandate or force masks upon them is not your decision to make. It is a decision for each individual to make for themselves. It is our right. My government forces its subjects to do things instead of allowing the freedom of choice is called dictatorship. Does this administration want to be known as a dictatorship that drives social rights between the community members and travel on all the people's freedom of choice? Or name administration that championed for the people instead of for the people? And that is the end. If you see that, I will propose a public hearing on coordinates twenty-eight zero one six. And then, who cares, huh?
Yeah, she's doing her work.
Yeah. So what are some wishes to the council?
Governor Mayor?
Oh, yes. So, woman of the waters, again.
I'm not exactly sure how, how this would work, but I'm wondering about moving to table this, if the council would be willing to issue a recommendation on behalf of the city that we urge citizens to mask up in social places. In light of what the governor, governor has stated.
So you're moving to table ordinance twenty-eight zero one six, right?
Yes.
Wait, sure. Governor Mayor? Yeah.
She, she's moving it with a cabinet, though, so do we need to discuss that before we just make a motion to table?
No, I'm waiting for, for, to get somebody sure that she can get written down. So, now would you get her full cable motion or Councilwoman Glorious will you? Okay, Councilwoman Glorious, will you read what you set out in the move for table?
Uh, so I would move to table this disorderment twenty-eight zero one six. If the council would be willing to issue a recommendation on behalf of the city that we urge citizens to mask up in a social business.
Well, since you put an if in there, I'm not quite sure. With that if in there, it means almost you would have to have the motion to table it first, because you're saying if the council is willing to table, then you would recommend this. So I think you, we need to, you either need to take the if out and make it mandatory, or you need, we need to decide on two different issues.
How do you change?
So, so I said I would move to table this ordinance.
Yes, yes, I figured I had to do it.
Amendment. Who, who is me?
This, this would be based on the council being willing to issue a recommendation on behalf of the city that we urge citizens to wear masks in public in social business.
Right, look, see, when you say if, then.
I took if out of that time.
Okay, and so you're saying that you're going to table and then urge, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Sorry, did you get that?
Madam?
Yes, Councilman Best, go ahead.
I, I have a question of the attorney. Um, do that, that's two actions. Uh, so, did, did, did my vision of what has been noticed to the public has been missing? Uh, disorders. And that is what they act not saying, but there is no if. Uh, without us noticing and allowing that information to the public intend to have comment on us having a question or anything else that, that the action that have been submitted to the public has been served or issued.
Governor Mayor? Yes, my question.
Uh, thank, thank you. And you should, you should hopefully commend it for allowing the public the liberty to have all the information presented and consider it, the valid information to the shore. But, uh, first of all, I wanted to state that I have the following determines, so I haven't stayed fully covered on my board's board, so I think the motion would be to table a postpartum death. Then a second aspect to that motion, uh, would simply be maybe direction to the administration to follow on with, uh, the direction of the council is on doing something further on this. I think most before you to write is the ordinance that you found the publisher, uh, that's the order on the mask, which I'm developing as well.
Would you give the mayor?
Thank you. Um, I agree with what Dr. Valerius is saying. Um, I, and I, I guess, I, I understand that Councilman Best is saying that's another action, but I would, I would envision this more as like one of your proclamations. Um, you know, or something that come before probably to be discussed first. It's just something that we, as a council support and that you as a mayor support. Um, so I, I'm not sure it is an official action because this would be a recommendation, either from the administration or from this council, just saying that it's something that we believe in because the governor believes in it and because a large amount of the people in opposition believed in it, as well as the people for it. So, um, I, I hope that we can find a way to do this. I've not comfortable with humility in this until we have some sort of idea of what we're going to do moving forward.
I, yeah, I agree with what the attorney and the question that Councilman Best had, because the question about issuing this recommendation has not been well let knows, and so it's two actions, and so the, to me, the question needs to be divided. So I'm going to rule the motion out order, please. And I'm open to, um, another motion.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah, Councilman, Karen, good.
Um, what if we're going to do a recommendation, I guess, I'm working with the, the state COVID nineteen side. And to you, the recommendation would be based right off the bat, it's practice with IG, social justice is six feet.
It's practice with IG, social tests, easy six feet mask. If you can't keep that six feet posted and get tested, you're sick. That's the four elements that's on the state side. So, I mean, I, I don't become bold. We wanted to say we recommend all, all the state items that I just listed.
And I guess, Councilman Carrington, my, my decision is the same. I feel that it's two separate items. One, so we need to address the ordinance that's on our agenda and which has been noticed and then we can take up any other matters after that time. So what is the wishes of the council?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I'm looking for the ability to put it onto the table to discuss it.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm looking for the ordinance.
Okay.
That's what I was just referring it forward to talk about.
Right, okay, so.
Right above order or below the time of? We are moving up.
Councilman Carrington?
Okay, is there a second to the deputy mayor's motion to approve ordinance twenty dash sixteen?
Second.
Councilwoman Glarus, is that you? Oh, yes, okay, sorry. Alrighty, so the motion has been moved to be approved. Discussion, questions, amendments by the council.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Best, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I would like to thank the public for participating and being patient with us as we allowed for all voices to be heard. And we heard a lot of passionate folks on, on both sides of this. And, um, we do live in a republic and it's, and it's not always the mob rule, uh, the most voices. Uh, it is, it is, uh, we have representative, uh, uh, aspects within our council that there, we have constituencies that we support, um, that the most of the business owners, uh, were expressed. Um, there, there's lots of concern that is out there. I am of the opinion that, um, each one of us, each family within our community has to make personal choices, um, as to what is best for each family. We do not know the medical needs or emotional needs of so many within our community. And, um, we've seen this on, on Facebook, we've seen it in news, um, where, uh, people are afraid and, um, there's so much information going on out there. And we have seen, um, a bullying aspect, um, within our community, um, and across the state and our country where, um, people have fear of a certain thing and they take upon themselves to police, uh, whether, whether it's their business or not. Um, I personally myself have been yelled at, um, due to not wearing a mask. Um, I've heard stories of people that have worn masks and have felt, um, that people were looking at them suspiciously. Uh, and so, I mean, I've seen it on both, both sides of things. It's concerning that we have businesses that are afraid of driving out customers if we, as a city, require them to police their customers. Now, I think it would be unfair for the government of the city to impose this mandate for those businesses to bear the blunt of something like that. It has been divisive. Um, it has been, uh, kind of shocking to need to read some of the information that's out there. Uh, people making lists as to what businesses are, uh, potentially going to be compliant with or what businesses currently are requiring and, um, from, from both aspects. From people who have heard plenty of the testimony where businesses, uh, have been, or citizens have been expressing that they will not belabor to businesses if they would be enforcing something that the city would be, um, requiring. I'm not comfortable with, uh, with this ordinance as a train. Um, I'm not comfortable in this ordinance, uh, uh, with the, uh, modifications to it. The idea of mandating the mask itself is something that I'm not comfortable with. So I would be glad to know and, um, I look forward to hearing everybody else's comments.
Okay, Councilwoman Glarus, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I too appreciate, uh, the testimony from people. Um, it goes to here on, on both sides. Uh, the, the things that I appreciate last are, are profanity and threats and such because those don't really have a lot of place in the public process. But in all the testimony, it was good. One of, probably one of my main reasons for supporting this was I think this decision falls on each business no matter what, whether, whether the city is behind it or not. Um, and, and we've heard that argument on both sides. And, and my only thought from businesses that I heard about was concern for their employees and being able to stay open. And also, one of my thoughts was that, uh, that maybe if this, as a city, we stood behind them, that would help support them. So that's really, uh, where I was coming from, from this. You know, we could, you know, we could basically go back and forth and debate all day about effectiveness and all of those different things. And so I don't know that that, um, really is helpful at this point. Uh, the question would be is if we could make some changes to our emergency ordinance. At this point, um, I am supporting, supporting the state guidelines definitely, which was, um, why I was eager of this. Thank you.
Councilwoman Glarus, with the motion on the floor, uh, you certainly are welcome to make amendments to the ordinance and then those amendments would be voted up or down, just, you know, like always. So I want to be sure you understood that.
Okay.
And as well as for any other council people, yeah. So even though it isn't an emergency, we can handle that, right?
Uh, yes, yes.
Then just go ahead.
Um, yeah, I would like to make an amendment on, um, it's on page six under, uh, five. Um, I don't think that the pressure should be, I don't want any of our local businesses to feel...
Can you tell, tell us your motion first and then you can...
Oh, yeah, sure, sure. Um, I would like to change, um, shall to may when it says businesses and building owners.
Shall, okay, second. Okay, so now, now you go ahead and give your justification.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want any of our local businesses to feel, um, I don't have concern about uh, would a customer get angry or get, want to have their employees have to deal with that pressure and feel like they're going to be, uh, wouldn't come out there in the city and that's not the intention at all. I also agree, um, with Councilwoman Glarus on giving the city support on this takes a bit of that pressure off of the businesses because then they don't feel like, oh, if I have a mask mandate, um, uh, it's not just on the business. We're saying this is a city that we support it, um, and it puts it on us. So better to make that amendment.
Okay, now the discussion is on just the amendment to change the shall to may. And, um, Mike, I know Councilwoman Best asked, um, for your parliamentary procedure opinion. I guess mine is now, um, since the ordinance to be passed as is required according to our code, either everyone present has to vote for or at least seventy-five percent of our membership, which I thought candidate earlier was spent. Is that true for the amendments also?
Um, I don't think so, but, but I think the, uh, the ordinance in the states, uh, is going to pass the ordinance that we call is the, uh, the specific one, the six person majority.
But not, not any amendments or changes to it doesn't require that?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Further discussion on the amendment.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Best?
Uh, I have a question of the maker of the amendment. Uh, if you read all of the five, um, now you are just changing the first shall. There are just multiple shells and it is also four compel removal language in there. So would you like to address that entire paragraph in one, one minute? Or do you just want to fit each word one at a time?
Um, I'd like to say the whole paragraph. And like, uh, changing the shells to, to may.
The whole paragraph?
Yeah.
Okay. How many, how many of them are there in there?
One, two.
Madam Mayor, the attorney, the council.
Oh, you did it? Okay, I'm sorry, Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt on the, uh, the, 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 uh, uh, the title of this ordinance, uh, is an emergency that will face cover a mandate, not a recommendation.
I'm sorry.
The other side was, uh,
What are you doing there?
The court has ordered the title of the mandate not recommendation to may. It will, if there is a may, the title has been mandated. Also, you have the shells entitled to match with the new language. Or alternatively, you could, uh, by setting the attorney.
That's, uh, you probably do the law for the state mandates. Um, but, um, to, to adjust this one on four, I think it's, uh, that is all I can.
Okay. Um, Councilwoman, Daniel's being, when the man was literally was saying regarding your mandate.
Yeah, I, I see what you're saying. So, so I'm unable to address it.
So Mike is, are you saying that the amendment then to be ruled out of order?
Yes.
Well, you do that, uh, the order title, uh, that applies to the emergency mandate of may cover may.
Right, so the title you don't feel can be changed?
Well.
Okay, so then are you saying that I should rule the amendment out of order because it conflicts with the title of the emergency ordinance?
Well, I think it's, uh, I think it's a good effort, uh, for our study. I would be sure that, uh, the county that we're trying to prove, uh, uh, the, 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 the draw, uh, 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 whatever, uh, what, uh, copy.
Okay, okay, so if this is not... I believe the decision after you leave the amendment, Councilwoman Mark Daniels, do you want the amendment withdrawn or you want to leave it on the table?
Um, I'd like to leave on the table. Um, I, I also, uh, so there's the shall in the first sentence and then the shall in the second sentence. Um, I don't think that the one that says provided however that this regulation shall be applied in a consistent, um, needs to be changed. So maybe just those first two.
Just first two?
Yeah.
Okay, does that really lead to the second?
Yeah.
Okay, so Madam Book, would you get that? So you want to read, you want to perform the case? So the amendment proposed by Councilmember Daniels will be changing in section five, uh, the proposed mandate. The ordinance will be, the word shall in the first sentence will be changed to may. And then we want to have another, we had two shells that we wanted. They changed, there's two shells in that first sentence, section five. So for the people that hold the, the listening on the, uh, the, 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 uh, that we got, reach that, essentially, view and meditate please. For section five of the ordinance twenty dash zero sixteen, the proposed amendment will be businesses and then building owners may deny commitment to any individual who fails to comply with this order and may require a compel removal of such individuals from the premises. Okay, you have further questions, comments, or even amendment to the amendment? Okay, so Madam Book, would you remove the, um, So this will be further proposed amendment for changing the word shall to may. Councilmember Zerlarius?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Sue Carrington?
No.
Councilmember Roger Best?
No.
Councilmember Julie Bridge?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, screen comes?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, end of race.
No.
Now we have the ordinance, um, before us is amended. Further amendments, further discussion on the ordinance.
Councilwoman Carrington, yes, Councilwoman Carrington, go ahead.
Um, well, I'm, you know, always one to look to other places for ideas, for ordinances, et cetera. But I can't say that any would ever be my top ten of places to look for inspiration. Um, so I just, I, I just struggle with the whole idea of an angry ordinance. I mean, popping out from Palmer, I, as we heard a few people mention in the testimony, I don't think that we want to be like angry. I don't think we want to be in that direction. So I, I, I have trouble with the, you know, with the ordinance in its entirety. So I'll be very middle on this one.
Other comments or... About, yes, Councilwoman Robert, go ahead.
Uh, so, well, first of all, I would like to think, uh, Councilwoman comes bringing comes for bringing this ordinance to the council. Uh, whether you like this ordinance or not. Three weeks ago, the governor felt like we were in such an emergency situation that he had to send out an emergency and put to every citizen in the state of Alaska. And that frankly scared quite a few people. Uh, who came to Councilwoman Comes and asked her to do something about... her to do something about it. And if we are doing anything in this job, it is listening to our constituents and, and what they had to say and following through with it. She may not even believe that we should enact a last mandate, but she was doing what was asked of her as councilperson. And I, and I, I respect that part of it because this is a very, very decisive issue, extremely political, and that, and sad, supersided by, uh, these four nights of listening to this testimony. This did not have to be such a politically divisive issue. And I honestly, it was a failure of leadership, a failure of leadership from the top, from the center of the nation to our center, and quite frankly, here to do Madam Mayor. No, I, I wouldn't wanna do a mandate. I don't wanna do a mandate. Um, I would like to think that people, people are good and that they do the right thing, but a lot of that, a lot of that testimony is really that that's not actually the case. And even by changing the word from shall to may, already that gives people the, the, they're not going to do it. And I, and it's, it's, I just, it's sad. I, I'm really hopeful for this because I feel, uh, that we are on the brink of something. Our, our hospital is full. Our, um, a lot of that testimony in three weeks' time didn't age very well. Our members are decreasing, um, and I, I, I feel, you know, the, the, um, what we could have done maybe three weeks ago, it's probably too late, but I still am gonna vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here who, uh, is Councilwoman Daniels, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I was speaking to someone, someone about this and I wanted to share a quote in the conversation we had. They said, "Character is invisible and what you do defines your character." And my opinion, if, as a council, we fail to pass this and someone in our community gets severely ill or passes away as a result of our inaction, um, it makes me question what kind of message was intended to our community. So my vote tonight will be on the side of temporary caution so we can all get this, get through this together safely. I wanna thank the public for all the testimony. It's amazing to have so much input and feedback in our community. Lastly, I want to say that regardless of how the vote goes, I urge everyone in the community to stay safe and stay kind to each other. Um, it's our respect and kindness for each other despite sometimes differing opinions. That's one of my favorite things about former. So, thanks, you're welcome.
Thank you. Um, thank you for everyone's first speaking with us and listening to all of this testimony. I'm pretty torn on this vote because it's forcing me to choose between writing on my heart and my brain as the right thing to do, which is asking, and ultimately, what I was elected to do, which is represent the local people. We hold public hearings to find out what over opinion is, um, not to push agenda as a lot of people have been seeing. Sixty-eight percent of those who testified on this ordinance were not in support of it. And I feel it's our duty to abide by our oath of office and act, investigate with our citizens impartially, so I won't be voting yes on this ordinance tonight. However, I hope that those sixty-eight percent opposed take a moment to think about the thirty-one percent of our community who does not feel safe in our hometown. Whether or not you agree on their reasoning, their opinions are just as important and deserve to be heard. That's why I brought this forward. It's our duty to bring conversations to the table to allow for a platform for our community to voice their concerns, regardless of what side of their arm. Bringing forward legislation that was requested by our community members should not be taken lightly, and I hope those in opposition, specifically as councilmembers, consider taking small steps to help their neighbors feel safe rather than respond with hate and anger as I most certainly experienced in the past couple of weeks and that some of you have even witnessed in these chambers. There are constructive ways to oppose opposition and support, and we've seen that with the majority of this testimony. But I do hope those who have been choosing to be less than civil on this matter take trying, to try and understand opposing viewpoints and work to be good neighbors to everyone, not just those that share the same political ideology. And I would hope that that starts with the members of this council, um, instead of just supporting absolutely unsocial behavior. Thank you.
Other comments from any of the council? Three minutes, so then, as a clerk, you call a role in the motion to, um, accept ordinance number going off, or ordinance number twenty dash zero sixteen as amended. Right, is that here? All right, Councilmember Jill Villarreal?
Yes.
Councilmember Brian Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Steve Carrington?
No.
Councilmember Richard Best?
No.
Councilmember Julie Burridge?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Supreme Combs?
No.
Mayor Anna DeGrasse?
No.
Which is, uh, the next item on our agenda is a record that Biden's placed on the table. He's sending emails, yes, huh? Yes, it is, enough emails, okay. Council, comments? Um, I started in the room, I think I started on, um, way online last time. Councilwoman Daniels, you have comments?
I just wanted to, uh, again, thank everybody for all the input and testimony on it. I also wanted to, uh, send my word out to everyone who's been affected by the recent homicide we had. And, yeah, just kind of like the hospital family and everyone involved, uh, who's still in that pain and that community, you know? That's all, thank you.
Thank you. I'm also asking for council support to direct administration, um, to issue city recommendations for following state guidelines for building education and social distancing and asking all the things that Councilman Carrington spoke on earlier.
Um, well, that would have to be a loan of the council and we'll have it on the agenda.
Right, so it's asking for it to be brought over to the agenda.
Right, well, then, our next meeting, I was trying to say, oh, I mean, I thought you said the administration interrupted and so what. So you say that, uh, is, uh, deputy mayor support? Right, Councilwoman Villarreal? Okay, so to understand. Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I am, administration, I am to prepare for encouragement to follow the four state guidelines.
So it comes forth on our next agenda.
Next agenda.
It's not something you do by yourself.
Yes, ma'am.
You're bringing it to the council.
Yes, ma'am. And, and also too, when you're done, make, make a comment, um, after city councils and other council committees.
Sure. Okay, do you have further comments?
Thank you for your words about that, about the cluster and, uh, the tragedy in Palmer and, um, a horrible thing that a lot of our constituents members are dealing with this week and that we face some prospectors. So thank you for bringing that up. Um, I, yeah, I think that's all.
Um, Council, uh, Richard Best, Councilwoman Best, since I can't see your face, I'll choose you next. Comments?
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I'd like to commend, uh, the council for allowing, uh, the reading of, of all of the emails. I think it's an important issue, uh, to continue that precedent that has been set in reading, uh, emails into the record. We often get information, uh, and conversations happen outside of council, and it's always important to make sure that, that these, uh, uh, public comments and the discussions and the debate that we have on subject matters to be open and public, and I appreciate that.
Seth, Councilwoman Carrington?
Um, I just like to say that in this time, we do need, you know, move away from fear and look for hope. Uh, in my household, all three of us have to. We just got tested early this week, uh, co-worker of my wife. Since before Thanksgiving, we've been hunted down. Now my life's fairly miserable. My son had to scratch and throw up no feet, but I've got my own feet, so I throw up no feet, but, but it's, it is what it is and we're getting through it. So, uh, Merry Christmas.
Councilwoman Villarreal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, I wanna thank everybody for being involved in the process because that's, that is what this is. And, um, on a happy note, I want to thank Mr. Lucy and, if it might be Mr. Panison. We have an outdoor ice rink. That was something that I had asked about, uh, at the urging of one of our constituents a couple of weeks ago, and I didn't realize it happened, and I got a, uh, message on Sunday saying thank you about the, uh, outdoor ice rink. So I wanna thank them for that. I think that that's great. Uh, I hope that everybody pays well. He's the advice of many of our constituents, saying eat well, take pride in meat, swallow those things and stay hydrated and get it out of town, so, uh, I hope that everybody has a Merry Christmas and a, and a safe, happy summer.
Councilwoman Carrington?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I just wanted to be sure, like, it's been a long four meetings and, um, I think that there are a couple of people that we still need to thank, uh, that, uh, people that read all of those emails out loud. And so, uh, Nala, not here tonight, but Kara and, uh, Mr. Lucy, I thank you guys very much for, for taking on that task. Um, it's, I never found it easy thing, but it was, it was important and, um, and I'm, I'm glad that we did it and thank you guys.
John, do you have a comment?
Um, yes, I do, and, and thank you. So, um, I have been a city manager, county, uh, county manager, real manager for thirty, over thirty-five years now. And what we went through, I think, is the darkest thing I've ever seen. We have spent three nights reading every single testimony out loud. We continue that, um, and put the time in. Nobody does that. And I think that says an awful lot about city council on listening constituents, and there's still a mistrust in government, that our minds are made up in advance and we don't listen. And this certainly was not the case. And so I think that says an awful lot of citizens. Also too, I think a good portion of those are people who do not actually live in city Palmer, but yet we listen to those folks because they, they have, they have an impact. So, um, one of the things that, um, um, we are, we are really gonna do positively is we have, um, as of today, we've given, given out, um, two point nine six million dollars to our nonprofits and small businesses to help them through. Now, it hasn't been based in one of our other communities, but this is what city council and city Palmer led with, is getting money out to our, our local businesses. And so we are trying to do that. And just as a reminder for everybody who testified, I think, in reminder one, I think of those seven hundred and eighty-seven, every one of those testimonies were verbally or written expressed their love for city Palmer. Every single one of them.
I'm gonna have to interrupt you. I need, um, uh, be able to, I was hoping you were gonna wrap it up, but you're not.
I was.
All right, I will say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year for everybody. Maybe adjourn.
Thank you, everybody, for tuning in. Thank you for doing the master that you did here towards the end. It was remarkable, Steve, close to eighty of you guys all online at the same time. You heard the news that this has been, uh, completely stopped. They did not have the vote to get it to pass. Uh, everybody that's sending their emails, wonderful job. If only we could get our rural assembly to do the exact same thing here in the Hatsu Valley when it comes to giving testimonies like with the gun range. They didn't bother to read the opposition against passing. Uh, they decided to just let the minority make the decision that they might hear. They read every single one, sixty-eight percent said, uh, the emails and testimonies are given at one hundred percent against this mandate. The other thirty-two percent will go to the, uh, congratulations to both sides who are speaking up and stuff they're doing. Don't forget to like and share this video. I'm sure other people in the last of the year will be hearing what happened right in person. I mean, we love it too, you know, folks seem like they're all liking and, uh, making sure that they read their constituents' testimonies, whether they live in the town or not, they need to be struck with the same thing, they need to be open and, and work with, with it. I think they need to be demanded or stepped by legislators that are in Juneau. They keep telling us that there is overwhelming support, they're like stealing our PFD. The truth is, they have had overwhelming opposition against doing that. That's why they refuse to tell us how many emails and letters have been sent to them in that regard. Unlike the city council here in Palmer, they took the time to do it one hundred percent, open and transparent. I congratulate them for that. Thank you all again for tuning in here today. Facebook, Twitter, if you don't share, go to my website, politico.com, click that donate button. Everything you put in helps contribute to making sure that I can have better podcasts and, and back the microphone that I've been using here today. Those things, to your guys' contributions, it made a whole difference thinking that actually hear what was being said versus the last meeting that was earlier and them reading emails, you couldn't hear nothing other than breathing in the background. Thank you all again. Don't forget to share. Have a great night and have a very, Merry Christmas.